Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of October 21st, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
We have with us tonight Joseph Still, Jared Chadwick, Judith Whiteside, myself, Sarah Corbett, Marcus Gomes, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan, and Town Council Richard Bowen.
And they are remote, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I declare that there is a quorum present. May I have the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Gomes?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Resident comments, is there anyone here who chooses to speak? Residents' comments, is there anyone here who chooses to speak to this board on something that is not on the agenda? Mr. Day? Thank you. Announcements, Mr. Still?
None for me.
Mr. Chadwick?
I have none.
Mr. Gomes?
I have none today.
Oh goodness.
No, nothing.
Okay, announcements. Church of the Good Shepherd on High Street offers free meals every Thursday to eat in or to take out. It starts at 4:30. If you want to take it out, you have to pick it up between 4:30 and 4:45. On October 25th, the VFW is sponsoring a fundraiser for the Jimmy Fund, the Fairhaven Cancer Center, and local families who are affected by cancer. Tickets at the door are, must be $20, and it starts at 6:30. The Y is sponsoring a free trunk or treat on October 25th from 3 to 4. Also, on the 25th, Wareham Land Trust is sponsoring a kayak tour of the Agawam River from 10 to 12. Space is limited, so you should sign up online. On November 1st at 9:00 a.m., you can join in the 13th Grumpy's Walk or Run through the bogs at 80 Makepeace on Tyhonet Road. Registration is required. And if you look around the room, every single one of the color photographs here, and those two black and white ones were taken by Grumpy. He was a foreman for 80 Makepeace, and his hobby was taking absolutely gorgeous pictures, and he's Claire Smith's brother, was Claire Smith's brother. One more, on the 15th of November, the High School Deca Club is sponsoring a craft fair on November 15th from 10 to 3. And also, please remember, it is hunting season, and wearing international orange is strongly recommended. I saw a whole bunch of people the other day walking through the woods with dogs on leashes without that, and it just is asking for trouble. And finally, the speed limit in Wareham, in the town of Wareham, unless otherwise posted, is 35 miles an hour, not 425 miles an hour, not the 75 miles an hour that seems to be what people do on Minutet Avenue. There have been many, many accidents on the local roads. I'm not talking about the state highways, but please, 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 slow down. Announcements, we have none other than that. Appointments, reappointments, interviews, no hearings. Application for the seasonal extension, the paperwork on that is in order, so Ms. Corbett?
I move to approve the application for seasonal all alcohol off-premise liquor license extension from Mahadev Krupa, doing business as the Bottle Liquors, Hitalabin Patel Manager, 3074 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Massachusetts, 02538.
Motion made and seconded to approve the extensions. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing, no, no, go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is so. Come on right, we'll get right to you. Well, Ms. Ekstrom takes a seat and catch your breath. Can I have a motion to accept the, or approve the amended minutes of May 20th, please?
I move to approve the amended Select Board meeting minutes of May 20th, 2025.
Motion made and seconded to approve those amended minutes. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing, no, no, go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. October 7?
I move to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of October 7, 2025.
Motion made and seconded to approve those minutes, as read into the record. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing, no, no, go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. And one more.
I vote to approve and hold the meeting minutes of the Select Board Joint Session with the Planning Board Executive Session of October 8th, 2025.
You just said, "I move to approve," right?
Yes, approve and hold.
Yes, and is there a second? Motion made and seconded to approve and hold. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing, no, no, go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. Thank you. Okay, last thing on the agenda is a presentation by Brenda Ekstrom for the three petitioned articles on the fall town meeting warrant. And... We also have what? Yeah, we have, well, yes. So, welcome to our meeting this evening, thank you. And do you want to do them, one, two, three?
Sure.
Up to you, go ahead. And let me just, I'll set the tone for everybody in the audience. At the town meeting, Ms. Ekstrom will have five minutes and no more to explain each of her petitioned articles. And then the moderator may give her additional time, and then obviously, if there are questions, she would be able to answer those, but...
That's a hint that she wants me to take five minutes or less here. They're very simple. The first one is that, I think it's the appointed, I'm not sure which order they go in, is it?
The first one is adding expiry dates on the webpage?
Which I, it's just that any, anyone that's on any board committee or commission, that their expiration date should go beside what, their names, so that we know when they're up for, when their term's up. We used to have that, it isn't anymore. I had spoken to the chair, and she had told me that they're trying to get that done. So, it is kind of a moot point, but I'd still like to keep it going, so that it is something that, that the town knows that it's something that the people want to keep going. So that one is pretty much self-explanatory.
Excellent, and I will note for the record that it is complete. We bought a computer, a software program about two years ago, and it's taken approximately two years to get everything up to date. But as of this morning, there may be one or two that are missing, but virtually every name on any committee has an expiration date on it, including the elected officials.
Great. Okay, so, as I said, it's pretty much a moot point, but the second one is the elected officials. I think that anyone who's elected to a board committee or commission, that you ask for our votes, I think we should be able to get in touch with you. I get in touch with my state rep, Mr. Gatsky. I have had great conversations back and forth with him. I have written to Senator Duner, Senator Pacheco, Rep. Susan Williams Gifford, when she was in office before her untimely demise. And I think that Congress, Senate, you know, all the way up. And I think that if we're voting for you, and you have something going on, I know that, Mr. Chadwick, one of the things that you had spoken about in the past are, are, I know, passion of yours, are children activities, the football fields and things. If someone wants to talk to you about that, I think they should be able to get in touch with you. Because right now, the only way to get in touch with you guys is if someone pretty much either writes the entire board, and some people don't like doing that, or they stalk you, and they find out, you know, where you live, what's your phone number or whatever. And that's really not something that you may want people to do. When, years ago, selectmen used to have their own email address with the town, and their own phone number with an extension, that you could call in from your house, punching your passcode or whatever, and people could leave you messages, as well as your own email. So I think that that's only for you, that the residents should be able to get in touch with you. And I think that, that should be for every elected office. So, that's the second one.
Okay, and then the biggie?
And the biggie. The biggie, I want to clarify this, because this was approved, I wrote this in 2021. It was approved by the Attorney General in December of 2021. It is on the books as a bylaw. We've had some, some push and pull, as far as the town wanting to implement it. I know of people that have come to the town looking for an application, and they have been told either, "Oh, there's no such application," or, "Oh, you have to go in front of the zoning board," and they've been given zoning information. That's not what this is. It's our bylaw. It's already approved. What this essentially is, is when the Attorney General responded and said, "You want to, you know, you just may want to talk to," at the time it was DHCD, now it's the Executive Office of Housing and Liverpool Communities. They said you may want to talk to them, and just make sure that anything that's built under this bylaw will count towards your SHI, your subsidized housing...
Inventory.
Inventory, thank you. So, I worked with, I worked with the Undersecretary of, Derek, what did you tell me to call it for short?
HLC.
Thank you, HLC. I worked with the Undersecretary, HLC, Ms. Mendoza, I worked, Nikki Mendoza, I worked with Raykey, and I'm forgetting her last name, and I have it in here, but I worked with her, I worked, I sent it to Attorney Rubens in their department. And pretty much the main things that I changed was board selectment to select board, DHCD to HLC, but the whole thing. I changed the square footage, because they were concerned that the size that I had may have been a little difficult, if someone wanted to make it accessible, because it may not have been big enough to make an accessible house, that they may have wanted a little more room. And I made it so that it has to be approved by the state before any construction can begin. That's the, those are the main things that I changed. I unfortunately had a family emergency last night, so I, which, that's why I was late tonight, too. But, so I couldn't go in front of the planning board. And I know Josh had a couple of questions, but I tried to explain to him, "This is already a bylaw, and I'm just trying to clean it up." And I made an application, so there's an application for it. So, without this, these improvements, and what happened was, I'm sorry, let me just backtrack. When I went to do this in 2022, someone had, someone had put in a, on this special election, the special warrant, had tried to repeal it. It failed. So, but when I went up to try to change it, to fix it, they got up and said some things that weren't true. So the people were confused, so they voted it down. Once something's voted down, you have to wait two years to bring it back. So, I was going to bring it back in the spring. Unfortunately, I was in the hospital for the month of February, so I couldn't bring it back in the spring, so that's why I'm bringing it back now. And I'll answer any questions you have about this or any of them.
Questions?
So, is 24 basically just to have it, are emails on the website, or so people can get in touch with us?
Well, if you want to put your email, I think the town should provide emails. There is a little discrepancy on the cost of that. I've heard some pretty high numbers. I've spoken to three IT people in three different towns. I've tried to speak to ours. I've written him two emails with no response, but I've heard it would cost 12 to 17, that's the range, 12 to 17 dollars per email per year. I had heard, I think it was 80 to 90 thousand dollars it was going to cost to give you guys emails, which I just don't see how that can possibly be true, when they give every student an email when they enter fifth or sixth grade. And if that's the case, you're talking, let me think, 200, you're probably talking close to 5 million dollars in emails for the schools. And if that's what they're spending their money on, you know, maybe someone better look at their funding. So, I think 12 to 17 dollars is a better price, is more realistic. And I, like I said, I got that from three different IT directors from three different towns, so...
The one thing I'd point out with schools is, they have the Google Suite, which is offered for free. They don't pay for it for the email service. We do.
Okay, are you, are you saying it's 80 to 90 thousand dollars to do 20...
No, not for an email, but that's, this is where the confusion is. All the Select Board members have emails. The only one we've determined that doesn't have one right now is the deputy moderator.
So they all have emails, they're just not made public?
I don't know. They all have emails, I know, because I can email any of them, so...
Okay, well, if that's the case, then I just think if, if they have town emails, I just think they should be made public, so their constituents can reach out to them.
Okay, yeah, no, that was just, I think the number that I had heard was for our archiving for them, because we have to, we have to archive and hold on to them forever, was 200 per email. But, you know, that's, if we want to hear from other towns, maybe they're getting a better deal, maybe they're using a different service, we can contact them, maybe we can change it up, but, you know, I can double check that. But no, it's not 80 and 90,000 per email, so...
Okay, I have some questions on, on item 25, your zoning bylaw.
Yep.
I have several questions, actually. What is the funding source for the program?
The funding source is the program itself.
What does the $100 application fee cover?
That, the $100 application fee will cover the initial, the initial background check of the, of the applicants that are applying for it.
And you have 50% discounted building inspection fees in there, and who's going to make up the difference? In other words, are other taxpayers subsidizing that 50%?
Yep.
Okay. Who pays for the deed restriction, recording fees, and how much does that cost?
The deed restrictions and recording fees, well, right now, I mean, on this one here, it would be the homeowner when they're, when they're, when the transfer of the property is done. If they, if they're selling it during that sale.
No, because you have to have a deed restriction on it?
The initial deed restriction is done by, when they, when they divide the property, that person does it, the homeowner or the property owner does it.
Okay, and do you have any idea what the cost might be?
Just to put a deed restriction on it, it's minimal, because you're just putting it in the deed.
Are we talking 50 dollars, 100 dollars?
I, probably about 125 dollars, I think it is.
Okay.
In that neighborhood.
And who approves the divided lot? What entity in this town approves the divided lot?
Well, it would, it would be, you would have, the engineer would show it on the thing. It would go through the board or your designee. So whoever you feel was knowledgeable enough to do that in the town.
So, what, what you have suggested here is that the Select Board office do, or Select Board staff do this, to approve the appropriateness, and I'm not convinced that staff is trained to do that. It's also an additional job requirement that we are, we have one and a half people at the moment.
Or your designee, or your designee. It could be the town planner. It could be the zoning, I mean, the building commissioner. All they have to do is look at the plan and make sure that it is divided.
Except that, because I've had conversations with, with the Director of Inspection Services about looking at plans, and when plans are, or when properties are divided, that is brought to the town with an engineer stamp on it. We don't do the work.
Well, these would also be divided with an engineer. It says in it that it has to be a surveyed plan, that it has to be, that it has to, I can't just go up and take my land and go, "Yep, okay, there it is, it's divided." It has to be a surveyed plan.
Okay.
A stamped plan, so...
Okay. And then who approves that? Because if they were already non-conforming lots, they become more non-conforming, if you know what I mean. So who's, who's going to be approving those? What board?
I don't, I don't, I'm not following that.
So if the original lot is non-conforming, okay, and you add one of these, it becomes more non-conforming, right? Who's going to be approving that?
Whoever's looking at the plan. That's, that's who you, whoever you designate.
Okay.
That's up to the Select Board.
Okay. If the property owner sells the lot, who will determine whether all of the bylaw and the state requirements have been met?
If they sell it?
Yes.
It has to be, if you, if you read into it, what happens is that when they sell it, they have to, in order to sell it, that deed restriction has to be on it. So, the deed restriction says it can be used for no other purpose, except for affordable housing. So when that next person comes to sell it, I mean, next comes to build something on it, that deed restriction is on it.
And who's going to make sure that that happens? That, that the person, the buyer of the property can...
It's an unbuildable lot. It's an unbuildable lot.
And who's going to be doing the work to monitor this? See, my question ultimately comes down to the cost of this program, because the Select Board office simply does not have the staff, and certainly, in my opinion, the training to do this. I've discussed this with Mr. Sullivan. It's a, it's, it's a cost to the program. I'm not saying that the program is bad or good. I'm saying that there's a cost to the program, and I'm not sure where that cost is coming from. The town, at the moment, and I'm sure you would agree, name me a department that is fully staffed or overly staffed. I don't, I'm pretty sure that you would agree with me, that we're squeaking around the edges, so...
In some areas, in some you are overly staffed, in some you're short-staffed, I agree.
So, again, it's a question of where is the work going to be done, and how is it going to be paid for? Because Mr. Sullivan is known for being able to squeak a nickel better than anybody I ever met.
Well, I agree with that. I agree with that. But I can also tell you is that three years ago, the offer was on the table for someone to do it for free, and they were maligned in town. So, I don't know if that offer's still on the table, because I don't know if they would do it again. So, I have spoken to the Affordable Housing Trust. I have spoken to them about, or I've spoken to the chair. I have not gone in front of them this time, and I, again, I apologize. I have had, you know, that three weddings and a funeral. I feel like I'm doing three funerals and a wedding and hospitalizations and everything. It's been quite. But I have spoken to the chair. We have talked about, and I, and there is a company that works with, that works on these things, and I did speak to a person in that...
In the CDPG, Grace? Are you talking about that?
No, 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 no. A company that does this stuff, that was very interested in it to work, to talk to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right, and I sit on the Affordable Housing Trust, and we discussed something in this manner, or in this line, and the question keeps coming back to who's going to pay for it, because there is no staffing available.
Well, if I remember the last time, there's over 500,000 dollars in community preservation reserves for affordable housing. That's gone, that sits there, because we end up giving it to, I mean, you know, to the big guys. And personally, I would rather see that go to giving someone 10,000 dollars, 25,000 dollars, if they're going to build a house, to give someone a head start on affordable housing, or that type of stuff. And that's what I want to talk to them. And if they can use it to help subsidize in-town, a department that would have a, what would you call it, like a, a grant position, a grant-funded position, 19 hours a week, or 15 hours a week or something, non-benefited position. I haven't spoken to them. If that's what you feel that you would need, but again, this is, would be a determination for you guys. And, and again, like I said, this is already a bylaw.
Okay.
So if someone came through and demanded an application, someone would have to come up with an application, because it says in our bylaws right now, an application. And if you gave them one and you denied it, they could take you to court and demand it, because it is all in there, and it's been approved. I'm just trying to help you.
Okay, so I continue to have the question about the staffing costs. Throughout the bylaw, you have indicated that the work will be done by staff, the Select Board staff. And the staff would have to develop a process which considers all of the applicable regulations and processes, not only of this bylaw, but also of all ELOC, LIP requirements, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 20, and 760 CMR, Sections 56.2. The deed restrictions have to be recorded, to calculate the appropriate rental and maximum sales amounts, as established by our state requirements. You have to review the construction and development blueprints for conformance. You have to complete, and, not you, but, complete and submit any required documentation to the state in relation to new developments and ongoing rentals and sales, and monitor the properties for conformance with this bylaw in perpetuity. So, and the last one is, who is going to determine the creditworthiness of any buyer, and what are the parameters? So, those are my questions, and I like to have you address some of them. And again, they may be brought up at town meeting, I don't know, but those, those would be my questions for you, and probably would have been some that had been asked by other boards, had you unfortunately not, you know, been held...
Yeah, the planning board, right, exactly. That probably would have been their big thing, especially with the thing. What I, you know, as far as, again, I don't, who is going to do it, or how it's going to be done, with a few thousand dollars, and I know, oh, you know, we can spend 750,000 dollars for a piece of land in another town, but we will fight to the death for 3,000 dollars to pay to train someone to be trained in doing a lottery for affordable housing. And as I told Mr. Sullivan, you only really need to do one lottery once. So if you invest in it, and you had, you, you got all this approved, you had your building commissioner or your planner look at, say, five people were going to do it. They look at the plans, yep, those are all legally done, stamped by an engineer. They, they meet the conformance of... They, they meet the conformance of what we're looking for. Okay. Now you have those. They get them approved by the state. They do the, sorry, I'm trying to think of the words. They, they do the.
Look at the requirements and the restrictions and stuff like that.
Get all that done. The state's okayed. They build. They get them all. There's a lottery. 100 people apply for the lottery, and there's five houses, because that's the way it is right now. So they pull them, they get the five people. Well, now you have a list of 95 people who are looking for housing. And as the next people build the houses, you take them off the list, just like they do everywhere, waiting lists. So you only need to do the one lottery. And then as far as the maintaining, that's the job of the town now. I don't know who does it now, but it's the job of, it's the law. It's the job of the town to make sure that the affordable housing is done. It's that, that the, that they keep track of the affordable housing. Now, I'm not sure if they require the people who are, the, I don't know, the, like, say, the owners of 3102 Cranberry Highway. If you require them to go back every year, and the people that they're subs, you know, that are in the subsidized units, that they still qualify? If, you know, and that they still report to you that they are? Or if the town does it. But the town, that's their responsibility with the state.
I really appreciate the fact that you were able to come here tonight, Ms. Exer. I, I know that you've had a tough several days and a.
And a couple more to go.
I'm sorry, really. And I appreciate, do you, any of my rest of you have any?
Appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know, and I, and I know that, and like I said, this is, I know that there are more questions, but those are all administrative. And I know that, and without getting into it, Mr. Sullivan is aware of what I was talking about as far as getting the ball rolling. And, and there was, that was on the table a few years ago, to have someone come in, get it all going, have it all done at no cost. And then all it was, was a maintenance, is somebody just to pretty much keep it in a file cabinet. I don't know if that would, you know, and I don't know if that would still be good or if this weigh with the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm hoping to talk to them. It won't be before town meeting, but I have talked to the chairman, so.
Okay. Nice to see you, and thank you very much. Best wishes for your family.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to Mr. Sullivan, your report, please.
No, discussion possible.
Possible vote to recommend.
Okay. Ms. Corbett, I believe we have, you have the grid, right?
Yeah.
So I'll accept motions, if you don't mind.
So I vote to recommend favorable action. I move to vote to recommend favorable action on Article 3, prior year bills and deficits. Can I just lump them all together?
Yes, please.
Article 10, the Fearing Hill Tavern, Fearing Tavern Rehabilitation. Wait, I thought we were gonna skip two.
You gotta do favorable action on all of them.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, the, there are no prior year bills and deficits at this time still.
But we can recommend favorable action, or we can vote to pass over either way.
Yeah. Passing over, if I make sense.
So I just do two and three and?
Um, yeah.
I move to pass over.
Yeah, move, move two and three, oh, wait a second.
I move to pass over two and three.
Yep. Move to pass over, recommend passing over Article 2 and Article 3.
I move, recommend passing over Article 2 and Article 3.
Transfer of available funds prior year billing deficit.
Transfer of available funds and prior year bill, bills and deficits.
Is that a motion made? A second and two, recommend passing over those articles. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett and myself, aye. Let's see. 10.
Through 18.
Through 18. So I, hang on a second. No, 13, yeah, go ahead. Favorable action.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article 10, the Fearing Tavern Rehabilitation. Article 11, the Grosinger Hall Restoration. Article 12, Spillane Field Lighting Replacement Project. Article 13, Community Preservation Return Unused Funds From Completed Projects. Article 14, 2025 Community Preservation Act Fund Reserve Adjustments. Article 15, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Article 15. Article 16, Zoning Bylaw Setback Standardization. Article 17, Multi-Family Housing Waivers in Commercial General District. Article 18, Zoning Bylaws Amendment in Contractor Bays.
Second.
Motion made a second and two, recommend favorable action to the town meeting. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Do you want to redo Article 19, which is, no, we don't even need to do that, sorry.
We had voted that already.
We already did that. So 23 is the webpage improvements, which is the petitioned article. We already are doing that. It took a couple of years to get it done, based on turnover in the office and stuff like that. But we do have a computer program, and I believe it is entirely accurate on the website as it is right now.
So do I vote to recommend favorable action, Article 23? Or we pass over it?
You can move to recommend favorable action, and then we'll vote.
Okay, I.
Yeah, you have to, yeah, exactly, yeah.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article 23, webpage improvements.
Second.
Motion made a second to recommend favorable action. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
No.
Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
No.
And myself, no. Yes, and four noes, is that right?
Three, uh, three noes.
Three noes, who are the, who are the two yeses?
Me and Joe.
Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article 24, Town Email Addresses, and Article 25, the Zoning Bylaw Amendment.
Can we do one at a time?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
I vote to recommend, I move to recommend favorable action on Article 24, Town Email Addresses.
Second.
Motion made a second to recommend favorable action on
Discussion.
That one. Is there any further discussion on that one?
We already have.
Yeah.
All town email addresses.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Was it something about making it public, though?
It is.
They're all public.
I've gotten emails from constituents.
Really?
Are they right on, if you go onto the select board page, are they on the select board page? Or is the select board generalized emails?
There's a generalized, but there's also each one of us has a specific one. They are available to the public.
Okay.
I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah, just to, just to confirm, the article doesn't say anything about making them public. So if that's what you're asking, I think if you have the article in front of it, it's to make sure the, the elected officials have the, have the email, correct?
I think it's got another piece to it, though.
I don't see any of the individual emails. I just see the select board email. And that is coming straight from the Select Board Department page.
And the article also says to provide every appointed board, committee, and commission with an email address that can be accessed by the chairman of each entity.
Which we already do as well.
Okay.
So.
Completely different.
Yeah, this is moved.
But it didn't say anything about webpages or anything like that. But you guys want your, you should be able to highlight in blue for, is the way it's usually set up. But the, each department and committee maintains their own webpage.
Right.
So.
Any further discussion on that? May I go for a roll call vote, please? Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Go, uh, Mr. Chadwick?
I'm really confused with this one, so I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
No.
And myself, no. So tell me again, who's yes and who's no?
Hey, Mr. Still.
Marcus and.
Oh, you said yes, too?
Okay, thanks. So it's, okay, thank you. And then the next one, which is designing. There was a hearing on this. They have had a hearing on this, as is required of all zoning bylaw recommendations. Any discussion? I'll accept a motion.
So I move to recommend favorable action on Article 25, Zoning Bylaw Amendment.
Second.
Motion made a second to recommend favorable action. Is there any further discussion on that motion? I just would say that I am worried about the cost and the extra burden put on staff, which has not been addressed, but that's my concern. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still. Mr. Chadwick.
No.
No.
And myself, no. So that is a 050. Thank you very much. Your turn, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, if you look outside when by, I was just checking something on. If you look outside by the AD Marion Road, the fence around the property, that house will be coming down roughly this Friday. We know it can be interesting folks. We just ask them, it's, it's pretty close to the road and such, that we don't have any bystanders while it's coming down. It is still a dangerous operation. So that should be done by, by, by the end of the weekend. So they'll be done and cleaned up. The, what do you call it? The shed will remain on the site. We're gonna be utilizing that. We'll, we'll reskin that and put some new roofing on it. So if anybody's wondering what that fence is, yep, they'll be coming down. We're salvaging, there's some fantastic historical granite on there. We're salvaging, salvaging those. As you've probably seen before, we use those for projects such as the Bayview Park, the signage there. That's all that granite was actually salvaged from the dummy bridge when that was redone. So we love reutilizing those and making sure our history is kept in new projects. And outside of that, next Monday is, is the town meeting, 7:00 PM. So I know you guys have a meeting before then, but hope to see everybody there. And always ask that people try and get there a little early, so you're not in line while, and checking in while everybody's trying to start the beginning of the meeting and the moderator's giving the information that I think helps make for a smooth town meeting. Look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Okay, Liaison Initiative Reports, Board's Comments.
None for me.
I have none today.
Oh, goodness me. Okay, um.
Motion to adjourn.
You can't make it. He has to.
Then I second it.
Well, I did say it, too.
Okay. It is not debatable. I'll go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Still.
No.
No.
Don't do that.
Can I change?
Mr. Slaven is not here this evening.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Aye.
And myself, yes.
Every once in a while, you gotta throw Judith out.
You did. We are adjourned at 7:43, and I want to say thank you very much. And I want to remind everybody, be early at the town, at the high school auditorium. The meeting starts sharply at 7:00, and we do have a meeting at 6:30. Good night, Wareham. Thank you very much.